All right, if I can ask everybody to please rise for the invocation. Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Rick Malagani from Fairhope Christian Church. If I can ask you to please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Good evening, dear Lord. We call on your Spirit to fill this space this evening. We call on your wisdom to fill our minds and your love to fill our hearts. I look to each leader and participant here this evening and ask you to bless the work they're endeavoring to do while we all strive to search for peace, for unity, and for compassion in all that we say and do. In your heavenly name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Rick. Appreciate you. Okay. Marcus, did you have something to add to the agenda?
Counselor President, correct. I have a resolution regarding postponement litigation in federal court and authorize the mayor to sign a mutual lease agreement with an insurance company. We could add that as number 20. I've got a resolution that I can read and then give the lease up for them.
Okay.
And just got their portion, I've just got signed this afternoon, so.
Okay, so release, what would be a quick description so we can amend the agenda to add that?
It's an authorization, well, I'll read the resolution to you. Governing body of the city of Fairhope hereby authorizes Mayor Sullivan to execute a mutual lease agreement with Charter Oak Fire Insurance Company in the matter number 119 CB 00117-TFM-B. And that's the companion litigation to the Breland case that was just affirmed in our favor in the Supreme Court of Alabama.
Okay. So counsel, if we could entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add as item 20, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a mutual release agreement in the matter, the case stated by city attorney.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, that will be item 20, and I'll have city attorney read that resolution when we get to that. All right. Next item will be to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting, the work session and the agenda meetings held on April the 26th. Do you have any additions, deletions, or changes to those minutes you'd like to make?
Make a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion to approve as submitted. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, those minutes are approved. Thank you, counsel. Mayor Sullivan, your report, please.
I'm going to step to the podium tonight because I also have a proclamation. But before I do the proclamation, there's just a few things that I wanted to report on. One was to thank Public Works and Utilities for the work they did on the pier. We all know that saved us in excess of $200,000, actually more than that, and really appreciate how they came together and worked really hard to get that project done. Looking forward to having the pier reopened to full capacity and having the restrooms and the lights there, so thank you very much for that. The other thing I wanted to mention was the crosswalk here out in front of City Hall and the police department. Work's going to begin on that, I believe, on the 17th, so a week from today we'll see the work begin on that. That is under warranty, but they will be replacing that lighting system. Richard's been following up then and following up the company and staying on top of them to make sure they get that done, so I appreciate that as well. The other thing, too, is thank you, Kim, for giving that six-month financial report. That's something I don't think that has happened in quite a while, and just really appreciate the work she put in that and how she, you know, reformatted the budget, the financials, and how those look, and I think that's going to be great for us moving forward. The other thing, I just want to commend all the organizations last week that had events, the Arts and Crafts Committee, the Downtown Merchants Association with Girls Night Out, Eastern Shore Repertory Theater with the bluff play, and then the Chamber of Commerce for the prayer breakfast, and the police department for organizing the lunchtime prayer service. It was a busy time in Fairhope, a lot of great organizations who contribute to the quality of life we enjoy and just appreciate their efforts so much as we continue to fully open up and get back to some normalcy. It's nice to see people out and socializing and just seeing all these events come back to full capacity, so I just really want to thank those organizations. And with that being said, now we're going to move on to the proclamation. Tonight, we are recognizing that May is Mental Health Month, and I believe Councilman Martin and Jessica are both part of the Baldwin Leadership Class who made mental health their focus for their project. And so we are going to proclaim tonight Mental Health Month, May Mental Health Month in the city of Alabama. So, the city of Alabama, the city of Fairhope, in Alabama, of course.
Hey, wait a minute, we were Alabama City, weren't we?
There you go. So see, I was just going back in history. Thank you. So, the proclamation reads, "Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans face challenges in life that can impact their mental health, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health and conditions, and whereas there are practical tools that all people can use to improve their mental health and increase resiliency, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas the effective treatment those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shall share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts." And now therefore I, Sherry Sullivan, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as Mental Health Month in Fairhope as mayor of the city of Fairhope. I also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Fairhope to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people in mental health conditions. Thank you. And Councilman Martin and Jessica, would y'all like to do a picture now, or you want to do it after the meeting?
Let's do it.
Now, go ahead and do it now if you want.
Let's do it.
You all do it?
Go ahead and do it now. Jessica could go home maybe. Yeah, you can go home if you want. I want to thank you two for bringing that to the city's attention and mayor for issuing your proclamation.
Yes, I echo those sentiments. Thank you for bringing that to the city council and to myself to do that. As we know, Representative Matt Simpson was going to be here tonight and had a family obligation, but he's worked really hard to establish a mental court, a mental health court here in Baldwin County, and just something that everybody's been, you know, just really focusing on with COVID and everything that's been going on in our country. So thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, mayor. The next item on tonight's agenda is public participation pertaining to agenda items only. If you would like to address the council on agenda items five through 20, if you would come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, you will be given three minutes, and I will remind you that if you have something you'd like to approach the council on that's not on the agenda, you will have an opportunity to do so at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. Good evening.
I'm Karen Myrick, and I'm here in relationship to agenda item number 19 about naming the alley. Is this the appropriate time to talk about?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, all right. I heard the dialogue, the conversation that you all had with our city officials before this part of the meeting started, and we don't want anyone to die on this hill either. So we appreciate that it is here and that it can be considered. We do have a lot of enthusiasm, you know, as neighbors and as people who use this passageway that some are calling a right-of-way, and we have always called it a lane, and other neighbors have called it an alley. And so I could become Shakespearean and say, what's in the name? You know, does, what are we going to call it and how does that affect it? And I understand from the city, when they called and talked to me about it, that when a lane is given a name, it's typically because there is one house that has a mail, mailing address or property fronting on that. And the implication, when the gentleman were speaking to you, was that that is all that exists on this lane are garages and carports and backs of homes. But there is actually one standalone cottage on the property. It's primarily rental right now, but in the future it might need an address with a street name. So that we do have that potential to have a house. The access for us is very important. We appreciate the easement. But sometimes when we are having company come to our homes, we have our parking, a lot of us have our parking on both parts of the lane, at the rear of our homes, to keep traffic off of the bluff area and the other streets that are rather narrow themselves. And so it is a help to be able to direct them to it, and because it looks like just another driveway, as the city official said, it's hard for people to see it. And so we thought that it might be really helpful to us in terms of the traffic on the bluff and behind when we are having friends come, if we had a name, a way to direct them. If it's just, I'm not sure, you said like a rhetorical name or something like that, just a name.
I said symbolic, but I didn't, I wasn't trying to imply that there would be no sign there. Somebody took that out of context. I was just trying to imply that it couldn't be, you know, used as, say, for mail delivery. I was just trying to imply if we called it symbolic, we could, I don't have a problem putting a sign there at all.
Right.
So I think somebody misunderstood what I was trying to say there.
Well, it's fine, but we just thought it would be helpful to us, and we are enthusiastic. And when I look at the other lanes in Fairhope, for example, Bay Breeze Lane is about four blocks long, but there's only one house in all of the blocks that has its address, its mailing for that address on Bay Breeze, while all the others, you know, are just, you know, is that now a right-of-way or is it still part of the lane or alley? So we would appreciate it. We would enjoy having the name there, but it's all right. Whatever you all in your wisdom want to do, I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Myrick.
And thank you for assuming we have wisdoms. I appreciate that also.
We were prayed for.
Correct.
Yeah, we're praying.
Okay. Would anybody else like to address the council on items five through 20? Okay, I think that the only member of the public has spoken, so thank you. All right, council comments. Councilman Martin.
I have nothing.
All right. Councilman Boone.
I'll tell you, I really appreciate the city's help and the work that they did. They're making a very successful arts and crafts this week. I thought it turned out very well, and it is one of my favorite times of all year. Thank you very much, city employees.
All right. Councilman Conyers.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of echo the mayor's comments that I really hope everybody had an opportunity to make it out to Arts and Crafts or, and/or ESRT's Wizard of Oz, Performance on the Bluff. Those were two of the best events I've attended in the city of Fairhope. They were fantastic. The weather was great, and I know everyone worked really hard putting those on, so thank you for everyone who did come out and support them.
Okay. Councilman Robinson?
This is why I'd like to go first. I want to echo Jimmy's echoing of the mayor's comments. There were some really good events in the last week or so in Fairhope. Big turnout at Arts and Crafts. I know Girls Night Out had a big turnout. I personally didn't get to go to the ESRT showing, but my wife and my children went, and they said it was wonderful. And then we had a big showing at the mayor's prayer breakfast last week, and that was great also. So just a lot of good things going on, good to see people out and about again, and hopefully a return to normal is very, very close.
Yeah, I want to congratulate the mayor and the Arts and Crafts Committee for putting on a fine arts and crafts festival. I thought it went really, really well. I want to thank all the city employees that made that possible and made it very special. I mean, we truly are one of the few places in the country where you can do something now. I mean, I recently traveled out of state, and I'm telling you, there are parts of the country that are still, they're locked down, and so, and we're not surging here. We're not, you know, we're not having massive outbreaks of COVID, so I appreciate everybody trying to adhere to the guidelines put forth by the state of Alabama. Also, I want to echo the mayor's sentiments to Public Works and all the utilities for all the fine work that you did on the pier. It's very much appreciated. You not only did a fine service to the citizens, but you also saved the city a lot of money in a time in which we need to put money towards other badly needed items, so I want to appreciate, I appreciate that. Chief in the back room, thanks for recognizing those officers during the work session, and we really appreciate all that you and your officers and staff are doing for the city as well. Kim, thank you. Great job. I thought that was very professional. I thought it was simple enough to follow, yet it had enough information in there to help us out, so I think that's much appreciated. Good job. Yeah, thank you. All right, with that, I'll close council comments, and we'll move to item five, which is a resolution that the mayor's authorized to sign and execute any necessary and appropriate documents so that the city of Fairhope and the Fairhope Airport Authority can receive the grant acting for and in behalf of the HL Sunny Callahan Airport in Fairhope, Alabama, so that the CARES Act grant application in the amount of $23,000 may be finalized, approved and accepted in accordance with applicable laws and procedures. Entertain a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We do have a second? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, the motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number six is a resolution that public improvements indicated herein for the Fairhope Village PUD are hereby accepted for public maintenance and authorizes Mayor Sherry Sullivan to execute the maintenance agreement between the city of Fairhope and the retreat at Fairhope Village LLC, known as the subdivision. Hunter briefed us in the work session, this is just standard operating procedure when we take over these right-of-ways, so I will entertain a motion to hereby accept for public maintenance and authorize the mayor to execute the maintenance agreement.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Any questions for Hunter? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number seven is a resolution that public improvements indicated herein for Fairhope Falls Phase Three are hereby accepted for public maintenance and authorize the mayor to execute the maintenance agreement between the city of Fairhope and the 68V, I think that's 68 Ventures Fairhope Falls 2020 LLC, known as the subdivision. Any questions for Hunter? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept these.
So moved.
If we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number eight is a resolution, the electric department is hereby authorized and directed to dispose of the personal property by selling to TCI of Alabama, who has offered the city a top price without the electric department having to use manpower or resources. Because of the nature and process of disposing the power transformers, someone qualified in his procedure should be allowed this task, and to allow TCI of Alabama the opportunity to quote on all substation transformers. That will be disposed of as each station goes offline. You can see this full resolution in your package. This will be the old transformers replaced by the new transformers. Any questions for Jeremy? He's got his coat on. Sports coat on, that is. All right, I'll entertain a motion to allow them to dispose of the property of the electric department.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, the motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number nine is a resolution that the mayor's hereby authorized to execute the First Amendment to the lease agreement as presented between the city of Fairhope and University of South Alabama, a post-secondary institution under the control of the University of South Alabama Board of Trustees for the leased area known as 16,000 square foot at 161 North Section Street, Fairhope, Alabama. You do see a copy of the full resolution and the First Amendment to this lease in your package. I will say that not all of the sections are being amended, only those specified in that lease, and certain items such as utilities will be paid for by University of South Alabama, the tenant. Any questions about that?
Only question I have is, do we have any estimate of what the annual maintenance expenses have been?
We don't, Jimmy, but they have, you know, been responsible for the maintenance, and there is a section that's added to the lease that says that we will inspect the current condition of all mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems associated with the leased premises, and I believe that we have recourse to go back if something's fallen into disrepair, to ask them to repair it before they turn it back over to us for maintenance. And that's why we put that condition in the lease.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute or terminate, I'm sorry, that's the next one, execute the First Amendment to the contract.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 10 is a resolution, the city of Fairhope authorizes the mayor to terminate the contract between the city of Fairhope and Mobile Infirmary Association, doing business as I Help the Community on September 30th, 2021, and authorizes the mayor to sign the necessary paperwork no less than 30 days prior to the expiration of the applicable one-year term. As the mayor mentioned in the work session, this will be replaced by services provided by Symbol Health Clinic, which we will be entering into a contract with in the very near future. I think that we should be ready first of the fiscal year to enter into that contract. Is that, that's what we're shooting for?
We're actually looking to, we're looking to. We're looking to enter into the contract the last quarter of the year for implementation in January.
Okay, so we'll enter the contract, say, yeah, around October, owner around October 1 for implementation.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Well, since you said that, should the I Help the continue through the end of the calendar year? No? Okay. I think we'll be double paying if we did that, maybe. Okay. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to terminate the contract.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 11 is a resolution, the city council approves amendment number one to the contract for professional survey services with Goodwin Mills in Kewood for the entire landfill property. The amendment is to identify more precisely the boundaries between the city property and the property that belongs to private citizens adjacent to this property with a cost not to exceed $8,000, and we authorize the mayor to execute amendment number one. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions for Mr. Johnson? He did address this in detail in the work session. Okay, hearing no questions or comments, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number 12 is a resolution, the city of Fairhope vote to procure duo dual authentication licenses for the IT department through duo security with a cost of $5,760 based on the code of Alabama. And I think we're all familiar with dual authentication now, and this would be necessary to secure our computers that use the duo system. Mr. Montgomery also briefed us in the work session as he changed into his slick wardrobe, so if you don't want him back up here again, we can go ahead and I'll entertain a motion to procure these licenses.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 13 is a resolution to award a bid for metal building and fabrication shop for the Public Works Department to Kimco Incorporated with a total cost of $61,116. You'll see a full description in your package. This is approximately $12,000 over budget. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of awarding the bid, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 14 is a resolution, the city of Fairhope vote to procure one six-inch high-head diesel trailer-mounted bypass pump for the sewer department. The equipment is available for direct procurement through the Sourcewell Purchasing Co-op Contract, which has already been nationally bid and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The cost will be $43,141. I believe this is a budgeted item, and I believe this comes in well below budget, so I'll entertain a motion for the purchase.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 15 is a resolution, the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of 24,500 feet of 2708 two IPS gas pipe for inventory for the gas department with a total cost of $26,215 pursuant to the code of Alabama. I believe that we are trying to just build our inventory before further increases in steel. I will entertain, entertain a motion for this procurement?
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 16 is a resolution, the city of Fairhope vote to purchase a 2022 F-250 Supercab four-by-two pickup truck for the rec. department. This vehicle needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing Bid List and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. Cost will be $29,331. I believe this was just slightly over budget, about $2,687. We'll say that we did save $16,000 off of budget on a previous item we purchased, so I will entertain a motion for the purchase of this pickup truck.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions for Pat? Okay. Hearing no questions or further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, the motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 17 is a resolution, the city of Fairhope vote to purchase a 2021 F-150 Supercab four-by-two pickup truck for the meter department. The type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing Bid List and therefore does not have to be let out for bid with a cost of $25,101. I think they tried to get a van and they couldn't get it. This results in a savings over the budgeted amount of $899. So I will now entertain a motion to purchase the pickup truck.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions for Kim? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 18 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Sullivan to inform and submit the municipal water pollution prevention program report for 2020 to the Department of Environmental Management. Those that want her to inform and submit the report, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Before I forget, we're talking about water pollution. Mr. Johnson, last year, sometime in the June or July, when it was a little too late, we talked about the relocation of the geese. Where are we at on that this year? It's hard to bring this up, guys. I meant to ask him in the work session. We had budgeted some money for that relocation of those Canadian geese, which are polluting our water, by the way.
And we have that money budgeted, and we are monitoring, and I don't want to jinx it, but the population has been relatively low so far, and, you know, and Dale, he's my, he's my geese patrolman, so he gives me an updated report. And again, if we see that flock getting large leading into June, their molting season, we would, we, we have that ability to use that service again from wildlife.
But, but the council passed a resolution to relocate them, so when do we make that call that we relocate them? What's the threshold?
Really, it's volume-based, and, I mean, I rode through last week, and I think I counted six.
Okay, so maybe if we get to, what, 50? What's the number? I'm just trying to give you some direction, because we did appropriate it, and we, I think we need to get rid of them, you know?
And, and, you know, and just so you know, last year, I think that number was in excess of 150 that relocated.
Yeah, I remember it close to 200. Mayor, you're, what are you thinking? If you don't want to get in the middle of it, I'll jump right in the middle of it and say we need to get rid of them.
Six at a time?
Well, no, no, no. When the number gets, you know, when the number gets to something that's appreciable, you know, that's.
So they just left? Did I come back?
I, you know, I don't, I think relying on Richard and them to monitor that and, and help make a determination when the time is appropriate. I mean, I don't think, right now, I've, I've been driving down there myself and have not seen an overabundance of geese, so don't see the need right now, but I think it's certainly something we should monitor.
And it's, it's, it's a continuing maintenance, and, and I know Mr. McCool keeps us up to date what he's seeing out there, and, and right now, I mean, I think our program was effective, and we'll continue to stay on top of it, but, you know, I don't want to spend money for the sake of spending money either.
I agree. I absolutely appreciate that, but if they get to something like 20, 30, 40, you know, I don't like getting reports that says we got the dirtiest beaches in Alabama, when I know it's from goose poo.
I concur. So, but, yes, we are actively monitoring, and, you know, and, and again, their molt occurs in the later half of June.
Is it in June? Okay, so we still have.
And that is the optimum time, because they're basically groundless, they're grounded at that point in time, so.
I always want to keep that at the forefront when you get rid of those, if it's a problem. Okay, thank you. All right. Item 19 is a resolution, and I'm going to read it like I think you may make the motion, Councilman Boone.
We didn't vote, we didn't vote on 18, did we? We made a motion and a second.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. All right.
You're very welcome.
Going back to 18, I thought that we had voted, didn't I ask, at the end?
We made a motion and a second.
All right, we'll go back, I'll go back and watch the video. Well, we can do it again. We have a motion and a second, then?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Yeah, all right. I think we had them, I know we had a motion and a second. All those in favor, authorize to the mayor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you. Item 19, Councilman Boone and I will read it like I think you want to make the motion, is that the City of Fairhope accepts and approves the proposed name of Bluffs Bend pursuant to the city's road name change petition at the request of Paul and Karik Myrick, Karen Myrick and others. Did I get that right?
Yes, me, yes.
I told you not to fall asleep.
Oh, what?
I knew it.
I'm reading for symbolic purposes.
I knew it.
I make a motion.
You want to say for symbolic purposes. All right, that's the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I do want to say symbolic does not preclude the use of a, of a street sign there, though I, we would be happy to place one there, but it is symbolic.
Does it occur?